Call to mean to order for the October 11, 2022 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Onto the current business. Are there any clarification requests for the consent calendar? Councilman O'Neil?
None, thank you.
Councilman Duffield?
None.
Councilwoman Dixon?
I have none.
Councilwoman Brenner?
None.
Councilman Avery?
I have none.
Mayor Protem Blom?
I have none.
And I have none either. So next item is the circulation element goals and policies. The Honorable Tony Petros, you want to take it away?
Yes. Yes, I'll go ahead. Mayor Muldoon, council members, I'm Tony Bryan, City Trap Engineer. And we're here this afternoon to talk about the update to the circulation element. And I have with me Tony Petros, who's with LSA Associates. And Tony and I worked together on this update, so we'll step through it. This has been a long process that we've been working on this. Actually goes back about two years ago for when the process started. So it's something we've been looking forward to bringing to you.
I wanted to open, first of all, thank you, Mayor and council members, for allowing us to come to you in the study session format. I think it's good to start with a primer on the end context of a circulation element. This is one of the five required elements of a general plan and is a high-level visionary document of intent for the city and the type of mobility that you seek and the citizens of the city seek. It's a 20-year plan that allows you a fundamental format to plan. It is not a project-specific document. You will not find individual roads outlined here. It is not intended to tell you which bikeways to build or what bridges to insert. It's an enabling document to provide you the framework with which to plan. And from this document, then, you would use your capital improvement program to actually identify those elements that you see fit to advance in that calendar year or horizon year. What we bring before you are the goals and the policies of this plan. And Tony will go into a little bit more about why that's important now. And it is very important now. These goals and policies really allow, they speak to what the public, the Planning Commission, and the City Council have identified as the key priorities for the vision of mobility in the city of Newport Beach. From that standpoint, then, planning and capital improvements can be prioritized because you are, in fact, implementing that vision. It's key to understand that for more than two years, there has been public outreach and public input put into this. This is timely. Folks have spoken and they have input into this document now. And that's why you'll hear why it's important to consider this at this time. The old document is just that old. It's nearing 20 years almost. It was done in 2006, and a lot has changed. And you'll hear what those changes are. Approving this document in no way affects the ability to move forward with the other elements of the land use element and completing the mapping that's required for the circulation element. There is a general plan law that says that there has to be correlation between your land use and your mobility, that you can actually move goods, people, and services for that land use that you see in the future. That's the next step. And that will come when you determine with the public's input, what is the appropriate land use for the city. But right now, there are enough moving parts for you to consider the goals and the policies part of this program. And that's why it's being brought before you tonight. Next slide.
So I wanted to go back a little bit in time here. And as I mentioned, this goes back to 2020, when we started the process. And the City Council directed the staff at that time in January to move forward with the housing element update for the Rena project. And also, at the same time, to do the simultaneous update to the circulation element to meet the state laws and mandates. And that's really the focus right now, is that state laws and mandates part of the process. And in April 2020, the contract with LSA Associates was approved. And they were involved in preparing this update to the circulation element. And then in October of that year, the City Council delegated the duties and the oversight of this update of the circulation element to the Planning Commission because the Council wanted to focus on the housing element update at that time. So I'll go quickly through the chronology of the project. Basically, between the fall, September of 2020, and March, we had eight Planning Commission meetings. So the document was presented to the Planning Commission twice. There were status reports that went to the Planning Commission during that time period. So they were definitely involved in overseeing and reviewing the document as it was being prepared. From November of 2020 until April 21, we had five public workshops. Now, given that there was COVID going on, these were virtual public workshops. However, they were well-attended. Approximately 40 to 50 people attended each of these workshops. So we got a lot of input at these public workshops. Certainly, a fair amount of input that was all documented and written. We have minutes of all the comments from the public, which are important in putting this together. And in March of 21, the initial draft was posted on the city website.
If I could add to that, Tony, one of the things that was unique about this process was that it was incremental and iterative. Each time that the public commented, we went back and changed the document and then presented a red line so that the public could see, oh, that's what I said. Hey, there's my addition. And if we didn't find that there was a timely place for their contribution, we had another list that said, that's a great idea, but that doesn't fit right here. Maybe bring that back to the capital improvement program discussion or some other thing. So there was real-time engagement with the citizens of Newport Beach.
Thank you, Tony. And now, the period of time, and you'll see that there was a long period of time here where the circulation element wasn't being worked on. And it was, but essentially, it was put on the sidelines. From the spring of 21 until the summer of this year, the real focus for the City Council, as you know, and the proper focus, was the housing element update. And so rather than bring this circulation element update to you during that process, we basically said, let's put it on the sidelines, bring it back when that housing element process is complete. And so that's where we are. In July of this year, we posted the final draft on the city website. We did get comments, which we've now incorporated into this final document. And in September, we went to the Planning Commission and discussed the project with them, and they recommended approval to the City Council. So the key here and what we're going to be talking about today are the requirements of state law that we need to incorporate into this document. And some of these are very, very old in terms of, they were approved by the state many years ago. And again, our circulation element is from 2006. But you have Complete Streets Acts and other bills for climate change that were approved in 2008. And yet, they're not in our general plan currently. They're not in our circulation element. So we're well behind the times in terms of incorporating those state law mandates. So the Complete Streets Act is a very important act, and it requires the city to review their circulation system and plan for a multimodal system that accommodates all the users. So that would be bicycles, pedestrians, vehicles, commercial deliveries, transit, ADA users, all the users of the facility. You need to plan for that in the system. The vehicle miles traveled, SB 743 may remember, it came to council for incorporation into a city council policy. But that was actually approved in 2013. That is not, as I noted, in our general plan currently. We have a separate policy outside of the general plan. So we need to incorporate that state law into our general plan. 932 is the bicycle pedestrian traffic calming. That's relatively new, but it does incorporate what's called a safe system approach. And in essence, the focus with that state or that Senate bill was on making safety improvements to the roadway system. So that's where you'll see bicycle plans and pedestrian traffic calming plans, the focus being safety in the system. And then going back to 2008 with the Senate bills for climate change and global warming. And there are policies that we've included in the document that, such as VMT, that would then reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. And that's meeting the goals of those Senate bills. So the purpose of the update at this time, and as I mentioned, the purpose is to incorporate these state law mandates and requirements and that are intended essentially to protect the environment. This is all including the goals and policies that meet each of those individual Senate bills. And in addition, as we noted, very importantly, through the public output and the public outreach process, the update includes goals and policies that the public put into the process and reflected their input and vision. And in this case, many, in fact, of those input and the different ideas that came from the public actually overlap and are part of the Senate bill and the state laws anyway. So that was very important. The big picture here, and I've been asked the question, when you think about the circulation element, really, and you look at overall traffic in the region and how can this improve traffic, our circulation element is consistent with the SCAG Regional Transportation Plan. So that's important. And that is part of what we're trying to do with this document to address future growth. Another important thing here is, and again, the purpose of this update right now are these state laws and mandating the state laws to incorporate them. A traffic analysis for the land use element and future development is not incorporated into this document right now. We can't do that work until we actually know the defined housing and land use numbers. So that's not part of this update. And it will be part of the update when the land use element and the zoning code updates move forward. So as it sits today, there's no changes to the master plan of streets and highways. So some of the key new policies, and I'll just, this is just one page. There are obviously many policies, over 100 policies in the document. But these are some of the key ones that the public had more of an interest in. E-bikes came up many times in public meetings. How can we minimize the conflict of the e-bikes with pedestrians and other modes of transit? So we're talking about wider sidewalks and, in many cases, education enforcement with a focus around the schools and the boardwalk. The Bicycle Master Plan, that's a standalone document today. It's not in our circulation element. It's not in our general plan. It's a standalone. We're going to pick up that document and place it into the circulation element in its whole. And so the goal with that is there are many projects within that plan that we can then incorporate and plan for within the CIP program. The Complete Streets Master Plan, as I noted, that's a Senate bill requirement, I'm sorry, an Assembly Bill requirement. And we're going to prepare a citywide Complete Streets plan. And that's going to be a big undertaking, but a good undertaking for establishing Complete Streets. The Safe System Approach, as I mentioned, there's a policy for doing an annual review of traffic collision reports from the police department. And then looking at those, trying to determine if there are ways to make safety improvements at intersections or on roadway segments. Local shuttle services or microtransit is something that was brought up, you know, with the idea, maybe you could connect areas like Balboa Island to Corona Del Mar to Newport Center. That's been discussed, and that's incorporated into the document. There will be more studies, I know, with this idea of microtransit in this area. The suggested route to school maps, there will be those prepared for each school in the city individually. We don't currently have those now, and we will be preparing those. It's not in the document as it sits today. But when this comes back on October the 25th, it will be incorporated. Installing more electric vehicle charging stations in city property is a big part of this. We cannot mandate incorporating the EV charging onto private property, but we have talked about the possibility of incentives to private property owners to incorporate EV stations in their developments.
Tony, isn't there a bill going through right now requiring commercial developers?
I'm not aware of that. But we can certainly look that up. But we talked about possibly incentivizing these developers to do that. And the curbside management, basically doing more of establishing drop-off valet delivery areas along the curbs to, we see a lot of problems, especially, let's say, on the peninsula in the summer where you've got Uber and Lyft and people are spilling into the travel lane and causing backups. And so we need to have a good policy for that. So as I mentioned, in summary, the update to the circulation element now is to incorporate policies to cover the Complete Streets bill in the general plan. And so that, by incorporating that, it avoids potential legal issues with not having it in our general plan. It incorporates the Safe System Approach as part of the annual roadway safety. It incorporates VMT policies. There's, we're going to see definitely the state and Caltrans become more involved in reviewing land development. So we want to make sure that we've incorporated VMT policies specifically so that our SEQA policy and practice is consistent when we look at those and work with the Caltrans reviews. And we have policies throughout the document that would meet the goals of the Senate bills for global warming and climate change. And also importantly, new policies include the public input that we had from those five community meetings that were important for the vision of the public. We incorporated those into the document. So for the public, if they have not seen the document, and it's been on the city website several times. But again, if they have not seen it, they can simply go to the city website. The easiest way would just be to do under the search for circulation element update. Look at that page for August 16th, and then there's a link to go to the document for their review. And that's the easiest way to look at it. The schedule now, we're here today for the study session discussion. And the schedule would be to come back October 25th with a resolution regarding adoption of these portions of the circulation element. And it's, again, it's an update to the circulation element. It's not a full, complete document. It's an update to incorporate these required state mandates. And so that's the status. And if you have any questions, I'm here. Tony Petros is also here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the dais? Yes, Councilwoman Dixon?
On the Bicycle Master Plan, I remember in 2013, Mr. Petros was developing that. I'm looking on page, and we're grateful for that. Is, have we done, what have we done since, in the last eight years, since the plan was completed? Have we incorporated any elements of the Bicycle Master Plan in our planning and execution?
I think Tony would be humble in his answer to that, so I'll say absolutely and emphatically yes. The city of Newport Beach is one of few cities that actually has buffered bike lanes. And as you do asphalt work, resurfacing and rehab, you're putting those in throughout the city. You've now added the green paint indicators. You've held meetings as it relates to bicycle traffic around schools in the Heights area. And because of that, there are plans forthcoming to improve the safety around there. There's already been a lot done around there. There are a host of other projects that have been undertaken. But remember, that was a $25 million capital project that had about 100 different individual elements to it. So there's still a lot that can be done. But the city of Newport Beach is a bicycle-friendly community.
Oh, that's wonderful to know. Do we, of that 25 million, and of course, inflation has made the number different. But I guess I would like to see, just a report on that at a future meeting, what we have done to move forward on that, all the good work that's been going on quietly, really. And you've been accomplishing that. I'd just like to really document that against your goals, just to see where we are.
I think we can come back with that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other requests to speak, let's go off to the public on this item. Public comments, please come forward.
Thank you. Good afternoon. David Tanner, Newport Beach resident. I have a statement that I've submitted a comment already, 15 pages. Staff hasn't mentioned it, at least I got here late, but I haven't heard it. I asked that it be put on the public website. It hasn't been. I've gotten no response to the comments. You each received the comments via email. So I'd like the public to see those. And I have some additional comments. I'll just give it to the clerk at the time I'm done speaking. Since 2006, when the element was last updated, a lot of things have changed. Staff agrees, a lot of things. There are a lot of opportunities where we could address things that have not been addressed, that are not being addressed in the circulation element. You heard Mr. Bryan state that a lot of studies are going to be done, and we're only doing, right now, the climate change, the city's Green New Deal, and we're going to do Complete Streets. We have issues like the John Wayne Airport. You would think air traffic should be something in our circulation element. It's not, not one word. Nothing about the agreement, nothing. How about electric bikes? To listen to your staff and the consultant, our circulation system for bicycles is great. But here, you're dealing with this independently from the circulation element, but it should be part of the circulation element, how we're dealing with electric bikes and pedestrians on sidewalks and on streets. That's what Complete Streets is all about. They're telling you, this is no impact on the environment, none, what we're doing, because we're piecemealing, which is illegal. We're piecemealing this circulation element to look at these two sections. And they're saying that the city's Green New Deal, climate change, has no possibility of impact on the environment. No impact. So maybe climate change is looked at by total carbon footprint. That might mean that battery-operated boats, which may have a carbon footprint that is bigger than a similar-sized fuel-powered boat, may be limited and restricted. So they make these statements that the state law requires them to make, but there's no evidence to support the statements. This circulation element says that it's going to be lowering sea level. This is not my words. It's in the circulation element. So the public has asked, they have not responded, not one word. Where's the evidence? We want to know so that we can give you our opinion, which is asked for in this. And when Mr. Bryan says that the public had all these opportunities, three minutes each to speak and comment, there's been no information given. And they make this statement to the Planning Commission, saying, oh, our master plan of highways is not going to change? They didn't say at the time, and it's in writing, they didn't say it's because we haven't done any studies. That's the only reason. So Mr. Bryan has sat here and told you tonight that they have to, they're mandated by state law to update the circulation element, and they are. But there's no deadline. It's when you do the next circulation element update that you have to incorporate these laws. There is no deadline. We're up against no deadline. So why are we breaking this into pieces? By breaking it into pieces, the environmental effects of each little piece is less than the total. So they're saying, oh, it's less than significant. We don't have to comply with SEQA. And because this is only paper, we don't, I'll conclude, we don't have to put this to a vote of the public. So it certainly appears like the public is being kept out of this by no information. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers, Ms. Manna? Jim?
Mayor Protem Blom and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. First, for clarity, this is a study session. And nothing was provided to study at the session. I take it we're studying, from what I just heard, the August draft that was posted. Although since then, the Planning Commission reviewed that. Apparently, no changes were made by the Planning Commission. But we did hear some changes are being made. So it comes back in October, it's not quite that. So there is a little confusion about what the public should be studying. And I, for one, continue to see this, although apparently it's intentional, that this seems more like a plan-to-plan than an actual plan. I did notice in it, it had a policy 612, that you would be promising to make improvements that would improve over the forecast of the performance in this element, although I saw no forecast of a performance. And I'm a little confused as to whether the general plan update advisory committee that you are about to appoint will be reviewing this element again, along with all the other elements of the general plan, to get them all together so there actually will be a forecast, so the public knows what the performance of our transportation system will be if we add the 4,845 houses or whatever it is, plus more. And so I can just make a couple of comments. If the GPAC does look at this, and it's supposed to be an update, they may wonder why it continues to call for the often-rejected water taxi that we had. They may be puzzled when they look at policy 2.1.2 with the map that not only commits this council to widening BCH through Mariners Mile to a six-lane highway, but commits you to building the bluff road through Banning Ranch and the 19th Street Bridge, which I thought are no longer in the county's plan. They may wonder why the map of equestrian trails and hiking trails does not show the Back Bay Drive or the Big Bay Nature Park, which I thought were multi-use trails, at least one. As to e-bikes, they may wonder why policy 5.2.9, which promises to track e-bike legislation, has no implementation program to follow up on that. And there was a question also about bicycles and how we were implementing the Bicycle Master Plan. Somebody asked me recently about what sidewalks it's legal to drive or ride a bicycle on. I believe that Bicycle Master Plan back in 2014 committed to updating that map. And I don't think that's happened, so I don't know if it will under this. I noticed in policy 9.1.7, there's a promise to update the Fair Share Fee Ordinance, which, as I recall, has not been done since 2006 despite promises. And finally, the very last policy is to implement an airport area special assessment district to fund infrastructure improvements in the airport. I've not heard about that before. I think the owners there will be surprised by that policy. And I'm curious what that is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Someone coming forward? Yep, come on down. No, this is not comments on non-adjutant items. That will be shortly. This is just this item. Okay, seeing no other requests to speak on this item, we'll bring it back to council. Do we have any direction we'd like to provide to staff? Yes, Councilwoman Dixon?
I don't know if it's direction. I just have another question. On the section CE 817 dot 17, specifically Avon Street Municipal Parking Lot Relocation, never heard that discussed before. What's behind that? There's only one parking lot in the city that needs to be structurally moved. But so what's the point of that?
That's an older policy. It was in the document in 2006. So that's a carryover from that earlier policy. And so all it does is basically leaves open some flexibility as far as parking in the area in Mariners Mile. But it's nothing more than that. There's no plan to relocate that parking lot. It's just provides that flexibility.
Okay, I'm not necessarily opposed to it one way or the other. But it's interesting that that specific parking lot and parking- that specific parking lot, and parking is such a premium in our city, I just wondered if we could, I never thought about relocating parking lots before, frankly.
Right. I mean, there's, there's general policies that talk about trying to look at parking requirements and where we may be able to have better efficiency with parking throughout the city. So not specific. This is the only one policy that's specific to a location.
Well, I guess for additional parking, given that new state laws are really constraining the requirements for parking, but maybe when this comes back. I mean, I would just say the Babo Peninsula certainly needs parking. I would think that if we're going to call out specific areas of the city that need more parking, can we do that?
If the city council would like for us to focus on specific areas, I think we could certainly incorporate a policy into, you know, into the document that looks at a specific location. But again, this was the carryover, the only one that was specific.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need any direction from us, Tony? Or Tony? Oh, yes. Councilman Brenner's question. Excuse me.
I had a question about, we say this is big picture, and this is about our policies and everything. When in the system does the community get to make suggestions about specific intersections and, and things like that, where they actually have suggestions and things that might help to encourage traffic to flow more smoothly?
Right. Well, that's the type of day-to-day, case-by-case, that we get those comments regularly. I get emails from people saying, can you look at this intersection? Can you change the striping, et cetera?
But you always tell me no.
That's a regular thing that we do as part of our day-to-day reviews. As I mentioned, there will be a traffic analysis with the land use element update, and that will, you know, in the past, when we did the 2006, that incorporated some intersection improvements as recommended improvements in the city, some of which have been done. So that might be part of that process as well. I expect that as we go through the traffic analysis, you know, definitely the public will be involved in that as far as any potential improvements.
If I may, Tony, you also have annually a session to go over the capital improvement program, where you get to say what you would like to see added to the CIP or removed from the CIP. That then is an opportunity for the public at that session to bring their thoughts forward. That then comes back to at least one, if not two, regularly scheduled city council meetings, where folks can provide influence and advocate for projects that they would see. So there are multiple interventions where the public can engage you in those projects.
Is this something that perhaps our associations, like Babo Island Improvement Association, CDMRA, and West Newport Association, where it should come through, if, if people have a real strong suggestion for improvement, should it come through them?
Absolutely. I think that would, that would be a good idea. We've definitely, definitely received comments through collective associations, and that's a good way of approaching things.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dixon.
Thank you. Just one more question. I don't remember this, the answer to this question. Was the 2006 general plan submitted to the voters for approval?
I believe it was. And I think maybe Jim could confirm, but I'm almost certain it was.
Yes, what I can say is that the increases in residential density, the overall increase in units, the increases in square footage, and the traffic from that was submitted to the voters for its approval. So it's just a distillation of all the development that was included in that plan, but the actual policies themselves were not voted on.
Well, so for the circulation element of the 2006 plan, was that voted on?
No, it wasn't. It was just the increases in
The changes.
Units, square footage, and traffic associated with the land uses that were part of that. That's all that was voted on. The, the actual policies, the circulation element, those were not voted on directly.
Okay. So typically, or by law, they're not required to be approved by the voters of the city?
No, just the, just the city council.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Do you need any direction from us beside what was just given?
No, I'll simply, I'll go back and look at the tape again and make notes as far as changes that we can bring back on October the 25th. I did hear some comments about not including letters and comments from the public. Those will definitely be incorporated into the October 25th meeting, and that was the, the plan to do, do so at that time rather than a study session.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Okay, now onto public comments on agenda or non-agenda items. The gentleman in the back who approached earlier.
I'll make one very brief comment. I feel very fortunate to live in Newport Beach. It's a wonderful city, affluent city compared to many. And I'm just wondering what the city has done, could do, or plans to do in the future to help the victims of Hurricane Ian. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Maldune, members of the council. My name again is Jim Mosher. This is a non-agenda comment. At your September 27th special meeting, you recall that some of you wanted to see a moratorium enacted on fractionally-owned homes while the final regulations were worked out. You were dissuaded from doing that for three reasons. Number one, you were told Government Code Section 65858 sets an incredibly high bar for enacting moratoriums. You were told any missteps would likely lead to expensive litigation, and you were told that, that losing that litigation would weaken the city's ability regarding future or final regulation. My comment is, as a non-attorney, I think all three of those reasons are far more questionable than they may have seemed at the time. To me, Government Code 65858 seems to me to be actually a tool that the legislature of California has provided to cities to allow them to put a pause on problematic development while a more thoughtful response to it can be developed. It is true, it says that you need to make a finding that there's a current and immediate threat to public health, safety, or welfare. However, I would point out the fact that unregulated use of land can be a threat to public health, safety, or welfare is the basis of every planning and building code that a city enacts. It's our basic police authority that we have. As to that threat being current and immediate, it doesn't mean that it has to be to everybody in Newport Beach. It means it can affect some people. And the currency doesn't mean like there's an asteroid that's on track to hit our city. It simply means that there is currently matters pending that could affect the welfare of some people, and there seemed like there was adequate testimony that there was. As to the expensive litigation, it was kind of a mystery to me what the council members were talking about when I researched this. It seems to be the litigation that arose from a, a legislation that we enacted in 2008 about group homes. It resulted in something called the Pacific Shores litigation. What was being litigated was not a ill-justified moratorium, but it was the fact that Newport Beach was violating the Federal Fair Housing Act by targeting disabled people, and the large settlement we had to pay was the compensation under that federal housing act for the disabled people and their providers who had been affected and injured by our illegal targeting of them. So that, unless the fractional homes are for the disabled, seems not very relevant. And finally, as to what prejudices the city, to my opinion, repeatedly and loudly saying that we think that fractional ownership does not currently fit our definition of timeshares is what prejudices us, because it's much easier to affirm an existing prohibition, which I believe we have, than to try to justify a new one. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And RT let us know that the buzzer is not working. So you didn't hit the buzzer, but you heard that cell phone alarm. You might hear that a couple of times tonight. That's an indication that the three minutes are up for those who will be here.
Good afternoon. Nice to see everyone. I was here in August at the study session, and I brought up the subject of STRTPs and mental health facilities in Newport Beach. And since then, I've had a lot of time to think about it. The Jewish holidays were over the last couple of weeks, so I've heard sermons. And I'd like to share with you my favorite sermon subject that I heard. It's the subject of ancestors. Imagining ourselves today as the ancestors of the people who will come next. And there's no better group of people to suggest that you are the holders of the future of Newport Beach. Well, I'd like to reflect on that and sort of imagine what happens if the status quo, the current way that everybody's dealing with STRTPs and mental health collectives, if it just stays. So the next five years look like this. Mental Health Collective has three right now. They bought two more facilities. There's going to be five soon. There might be nine after that. In three years, there might be 15 or 30 different mental health facilities inside of our communities. I know three of them that are right next to schools. Can you imagine that we have a city that is full of mental health facilities embedded inside of Newport Beach? Imagine it from the perspective of a business operator. Right now, it looks like the mental health community doesn't have a foothold in Newport Beach. They're not driving a lot of tax revenue for us, but moving forward, they could. It could become a big giant wave that Newport Beach grows its tax base. Wouldn't that be wonderful? I'm not sure it would be. And I think there's a way to stop it. And I've tried to figure out how to do that, and I came up with a bunch of questions that I can't get anyone to answer. So what I think that it might be, because I'm not a lawyer, because I'm getting these half answers that don't seem like, I've worked with a lot of lawyers, but the stuff I'm getting doesn't sound like it's coming from lawyers. So I would love to read my questions and ask the two lawyers who are on the council, Mayor Maldune and Councilman O'Neill, to walk through the questions with the city attorney, so we can all hear for ourselves what the answer, what the answers are. And here are the questions. Does the city council believe that the facilities that are being operated are being operated legally? Is there any evidence of licensing having been granted for these facilities? Does the council believe that it's okay to operate an STRTP without a license? Does the council think it lacks authority to shut down these facilities? Does the council lack the understanding of how to shut down these facilities? Does the council lack the manpower or resources needed to shut down these facilities? Is the council afraid that the city will be sued for shutting down these facilities? And finally, are members of the council or staff involved financially, or do they derive financial or other support from the operators of these facilities? If we could get some answers to these questions on the record, it sure would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Laura Curran. So I listened to Mr. Mosher talk about fractional ownership and how we can't take action because there might be risk, and I feel like this is the drug rehab situation all over again. But I promised to provide residents an update when I'm in town on drug rehabs. First of all, we were promised that there would be a lobbyist and qualified legal representation with expertise in this matter added to our staff or to our resources. There has been no update on that. And I say update because the city manager provides updates through Stew News and other venues on a regular basis about many issues, including homelessness, but there's never a mention of drug rehabs and the issues there. At the same time, in the August 23rd study session, our city attorney said, when a property, a group home for drug and alcohol rehab or social services opens without a license and starts operating without a license, he could enforce that they ask them to close down and try to enforce against them and report them to the state. But he doesn't, because they're going to get a license anyway, as far as he's concerned. And my question is, if a bar operates without a license, usually, isn't that bar shut down? If an attorney practices without a license, are there not consequences for the attorney? In California, we love licenses so much that in some cases, a hair braider can get cited for not having a license. So why can drug and alcohol rehabs operate for at least 30 days without a license and other locations can't? And what this does, first of all, it means that it's, for many years, council members have parroted back to me, the city says we can't do anything about those rehabs. It's the state. Well, actually, it's not true. We can, but we choose not to. And that means it's, it's, the council chooses not to direct the city attorney to, to enforce either. It has the effect that mental health rehabs are targeting Newport Beach to locate, along with the drug and alcohol rehabs. So whereas Costa Mesa and Huntington Beach and other cities take measures to have qualified ways to enforce reasonable accommodations for integral facilities and shut them down from operating illegally, Newport Beach has become the target. What's even worse is that for residents, we're told, well, maybe we need a new ordinance. The city in the last several months spent several months working through what would be a potential new ordinance for integral facilities and for other parts of the drug rehab. Where, however, last council, Denise Oberman entered into evidence that there are no obstacles to the city enforcing its existing ordinances to end the problem of integral facilities. Furthermore, this, rather than, in addition to enforcing, the city could write letters, ask for a state audit, work with the attorney general, work with the sheriff, work with all of those other options to help address this problem. The most insidious part of this is that the efforts and the time and energy of the residents are impacted to continue to bring these issues to the fore and to make sure that it's in front of the council and the public. So we ask you, as you come to the end of your term, to think about what you can do for this issue and what you can encourage people you're talking to about the council election to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, we are reset until, I'm going to say 5:10.